... I have to be with my own people. People over in Waukesha, Braden, Hurricane, we got rich folks in various places. These things are supposed to help, and this is what people pay them to help. We got a higher caliber than the usual. So take a moment, silence for the people of Waukesha. I would thank you. Because Father, we come to pray that there's still in our hearts. Thank you, how little less we have to spend on what we do. And we don't want, without you Father, we couldn't have a country like this. Father, I really missed it, thank you for this one piece, because I'm thankful. Father, I pray for your people, you know, not just in this parish. And where the church is in, so much more, if they're afraid of that law, which is going to leave, we don't want that to make it long time. So if it's kind, if it's taken of their own parents, I pray for a poor one. I pray for this Father, I pray for President, I would love, basically, um, for a personal state of everything I'm listening to. We don't want to do it with my children, I don't think you would like to give it to your side. Because the way we, Father, we do not, we don't cry, we don't believe, it's a dangerous time. But looking at this, I thought, I really think it's good to hear, and love, and go on, please, continue.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Michael Chino?
Here.
Mr. Bob Kleniken?
Here.
Mr. Chris Hall?
Here.
Mr. Ronald Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Here.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Mr. Richard Alcoa?
Here.
Dr. Kristi Elwin? Your President of this camp.
Hello, everyone. My name is Daniel Van Gell, I'm a candidate for State Representative District 62. As you know, this is a new district, it now includes a large portion of East Baton Rouge Parish. Obviously, West police handle was cut from this particular area. I am a graduate of North West State University and Southern University, A M College, and Southern University Law Center. I started this journey to represent the people of 62 because I'm a part of District 62. What's unique about me is that I've touched every part of this community, from growing up on 61 in Zachary. Family owned about fourteen acres of land out there by Hornet Road out there in Zachary, going to Bakerfield Elementary. And also having family in East Louisiana, Norwood. I have church members here, right here, Refuge Christian Worship Center, right here on Plain Road. And so, I've touched each part of this particular district. And so, I know a lot of people who come from cities, really don't understand how rural areas work, being that I grew up in a rural area. One of the things that I want to promote in coming up here is to try to develop the rural infrastructure here. We've had a lot of money legislated, many of you know, where we had a two million dollar surplus. I think a lot of that money could have went some of the roads that were, I need to be rebuilt here in this community, especially in this particular parish. We were actually, in legislature, they were trying to find different tech projects to go to particular areas to be able to assist with the communities here. As you know, I've done my due diligence, I've been visiting the mayor of Slaughter, who's here, intended to ask, what are some issues in Slaughter? I've met with, I've met with the mayor of Norwood, I've talked to the mayor of Wilson. I'm here now, I'm going to the school board meeting for East Louisiana, I've met with the mayor of Clinton. I have a meeting with the sheriff. And so, my thing is, before I can say what I can do, I want to listen, hear what is the problem and concerns here in this parish. Again, they're different from where I am in East Baton Rouge, but your voices will not go unheard. I do believe in helping every single person, regardless of the particular party ID. I am the vice chair of the Louisiana Democratic Party. I do believe in fighting for working class folks, regardless of political affiliation, regardless of where you grew up, how rich or poor you are. I believe in what's right, grew up in Christian values, grew up in church my entire life, I understand right from wrong. I understand between a lie and not telling a lie. And so, more than those persons that kept me grounded, I did grow up in poverty. I understand my mom was single very much, she lived the local poverty wage. And I believe education is the way it got me out of that particular poverty. I believe fellow educations will give us high incarceration. I believe fellow education will give us high recidivism, high trojanism. And I believe that our foundation to increase and improve District 62 has to rely on the foundation of education. And I believe that once we educate about the issue and have the people positioned to make things in this community move forward, I think we can start seeing a brighter future for everybody in the particular parish. I know every city is different. Again, I know what's there in Norwood might be not there in Wilson, might not be here being Clinton. And I think, my point is to listen, I want to have a lot of time on these. I think the community voice needs to be heard. I've never been a proponent of going to legislature on what my personal agenda is, but I represent all people. So, even though there are things that we may not holistically agree on, we can certainly have a representative that will represent the best interest of the particular parish. Yes, I am running against Mr. Roy Adams, who is a staple here, I'm sure. And we're a little different in terms of how we do things. The legislature is real fast-paced down there, and you have to understand how it is that's worked, worked down there. And I feel as though I'm a little different candidate, that's because I actually understand the issues. I don't put nothing on my desk without reading, you know, without reading and not understanding where it comes from and the purpose behind each particular bill. And I want to make sure that I'm connected to each particular city, East Louisiana, so that when I am proposing legislation, that it can benefit the constituents here in this particular parish. And so, those are some of the things that I have. If you look at my push card, one of the five things I'm really interested in making sure that happens is expanding school funding for public education. That's one of the things that's going to be dealt with in 2024 in legislative session, is there cuts to tax, to cuts to HBCUs, and cuts to other public institutions that have helped individuals like myself come out of small towns, to come out of impoverished communities. Give us opportunity to be successful and be a part of our state and be productive in our state. Also, I want to fight for teacher pay raises. I believe, once the legislators understand that teachers is actually a profession, they are then incentivized those that are actually teachers. There can be no other profession without a teacher first. And so, if we don't understand that, then clearly, we're going to be behind in times, not just in Louisiana, but just, just all over the country where teachers are fighting just to have a livable wage. And so, I want to make sure that is forefront of the legislative agenda in 2024. Also, one of the big things, making funding more available for local community businesses. How important it is for there to be small business owners here in East Louisiana. Not understanding that the same tax incentive they give to a battery factory, where their ten cent tax, they are getting four or five hundred rebates on their taxes to go into their businesses, where they're able to then increase their infrastructure and put these remodeler businesses. Imagine small business owners with, you know, same tax breaks, where that money could be incentivized back to the former grant, and they're able to put back into their, to their business. Another thing is road infrastructure, as I told you, there's a lot of rocky roads where I believe some towns have actually paid for machines to try to do their own road repair, because they have not gotten the money from the State Department to fix their roads. They're trying to take it upon themselves to do, where they kind of recycle old concrete, turn it to gravel road. And so, we want to make sure that we get money from DOTD, and money that's been paid down from Washington to help the small towns and their road infrastructure. Also, I want us to keep Medicaid expanded and Social Security defended. As you know, 2024, there's going to be an indictment against Social Security. Right now, as it stands, they're looking to cut Social Security. So if you've been paying Social Security your entire life, you're going to be looking at getting cut. And I want to make sure that we don't cut that and not increase the retirement age. I mean, you've been working for thirty-five years, you sixty, you need to be able to retire when you get to the certain age, instead of having to wait until seventy-four years old, where they're trying to turn rates on you. And so, I want to make sure I keep that in tact. And last, but not least, I want to fight to promote community safety through alternatives to incarceration. As you know, crime is a big deal, not only in East Baton Rouge Parish, but just across the state of Louisiana. Not so much in small towns, because everybody knows everybody. But again, this district includes Baton Rouge, Baker, where crime is really a problem. And I want to deal with addressing those issues through alternative incarceration, because we do have people who have served their time looking for an opportunity to be integrated back into society, and they need to have opportunity to go out and work. So we want to create programs where their record may not bar them from working and maintaining income, so they can take care of their families. And so, again, those are some of the things, again, there are many more things, but I wanted to thank y'all for taking this opportunity to listen to me. I have my cards here at the beginning, if you guys would like to read a little bit more about me. Again, I'm Daniel Van Gell, again, vice media next representative in District 62. And I thank y'all so much, and I have my cards, if anybody would like to read a little more about. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was Daniel, bro.
Yeah. Second.
September eighth, eighteen, October.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, I understand this is pretty much the same thing that the wildlife judiciary's ordinance says?
Yeah.
Because I've been asked a lot about that.
Okay, yeah, good talk, yeah, yeah. No, thank you. No calls, motion clear. It's only given a type resolution order and calling exemption to be held in Perry, East Louisiana, state of Louisiana, to authorize the renewal of sale and use tape, renewal of, add balloon tag there. Motion. And Mr. Hall?
Okay.
And Mr. Johnson, in discussion, question for the audience.
Yeah. When's the election?
November.
November. Yes, September. This one is, adapt, leave it twenty, twenty-three minutes. Couple of, on stage? No calls, motion clear. Adapt, leave it twenty, twenty-three minutes, kill you out there, if you don't discharge it, you're out of line.
I'm sorry, who is killed?
I know what you're talking about.
In Montevideo.
Yeah, I'm on my ears.
I'll make a motion for a doctor, once we find out who's in the line.
Let me just say, you were wrong, Tom.
I don't have to.
He said he doesn't look it up.
We're looking it up right now.
He's not going to be there. You're saying it's not happening.
Do you want to pass over for me?
Yes, I'd be, we'll come back to it, we'll come back to it. Okay, this one is, committee staff for COVID. This committee, I don't have any questions, question for the committee, question.
I don't have anything, sir.
Why, to, to Christopher Hall?
You've got a whole line, Danny.
Yes.
First thing, I'd like to make my, my motion to approve monthly invoices.
With Mr. Hall?
Sir.
And Mr. McCray, in discussion, question for the audience. No calls, motion clear.
Ah.
No calls, motion clear.
Item number B, is recommendation to accept quote for one hundred and five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars to allow civil construction to remove Denver Bridge and replace the shallow water cross.
Coming from the Golden Bridge.
Compared to our Golden Bridge, that's a motion.
With Mr. Hall?
Sir.
And Mr. Johnson, in discussion, question for the audience. No calls, motion clear.
Ah.
No calls, motion clear.
I have one question, but it's the same question we had this one, same from looking at it. I had a question the other day in the finance committee, and saying, we're going to put a low water crossing in it, then, and if we put a low water crossing in, and the water comes up, and somebody gets rushed away, will that put us, will we be responsible?
Well, to an extent, you know, you're putting a low water crossing, and they need to cross it there on the wrist. You're going to put a sign up saying that's a low water crossing.
I wouldn't do that.
But you're, it's a safe crossing, I mean, you've got to make it a safe crossing.
When the water goes over the road, because that's what happens, if you get a lot of rain, you have to barricade, you have to put up barricades, just like it was any other road goes underwater. Low water means that once the water recedes, it goes, and be what's left. You have to barricade, and then every time the water goes up. I just want to know what kind of liability the parish is going to have.
We just got, we just got signs, we just got, we got, West Louisiana got a couple of them.
Yeah. Just put your signs up, and they cross it there on the wrist.
That's the only question, we all assumed that the other day at the meeting, but I wanted to ask you.
Come for me, Danny.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
And question, second, no calls, motion clear.
Item number C is recommendation to allocate and transfer three hundred thousand dollars of offer funding to repair the Ruth Worth Bridge. And that's a motion.
Sir.
And Mr. Hall, thank you, Mr. McCray, in discussion, question for the audience. No calls, motion clear.
Ah.
No calls, motion clear.
Next item is recommendation to dedicate funds from sale of St. Palinger Street property for there as a maintenance facility. And that's a motion.
I have a second, Ed.
In discussion, question for the audience. I want to tell you, adding the real stones of all government buildings, and I think we should, the more water to maintain them. Keep, keep it good, payback, okay? It's our responsibility, in discussion for the audience. No calls, motion clear.
Ah.
No calls, motion clear.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a, is there a priority for the buildings? I mean, like, is the courthouse going to get first priority, and the jail?
Yes, ma'am, the courthouse is the first priority.
Usually, it is.
Yeah. I went to the legislature about five years ago, they had to give a five million dollars for the courthouse. This is the last time we were putting money for the courthouse, we got to take care of the courthouse. This is the oldest active courthouse in the country. Beautiful, here, I couldn't fit out of courthouse. That's the old car. More discussion. No calls, motion clear.
No calls, motion clear.
Next item is recommendation to approve monthly administrative operation fee transfer. That's a motion, but I can explain.
Please.
Okay.
In discussion.
Okay. Okay, so, instead of trying to break out manpower and charge, uh, two hours to Redden Bridge, two hours to this, two hours to this, two hours to this, to all of our different accounts and keep up with it, it's a, it's a payroll nightmare. We're going to do it on an average, where folks are charged out of general fund, and then we'll do an operation fee transfer every month out of your Redden Bridge, out of your solid waste, out of your what, on average, based off of a year, is how we're going to do it. It'll just make it simple for payroll.
Your question for the audience.
Can we go retroactive through January first, or do we go to December? Where do we have to start? If it transferred payroll, what was one of the real, rename that, re-categorize it, to add new names instead? Or do we just start from this month forward?
I would start from this month. Okay.
You mean, should you have that in the project?
In question. No calls, motion clear.
Item number F. Okay, item number F, I didn't agree with when we discussed that at our meeting, and I don't agree with it tonight. And I actually pulled up the Louisiana State law, I'm agreeing to you guys, and I had a conversation with Sam Bill before I started. And the state law is this, the police jury made upon request of governing authority of any incorporated municipality perform all or any part of the repair, maintenance, and care of roads, streets, alleys, bridges, culverts, etc., etc. So, East Avenue and Midway are parish roads. Midway goes state road to state road. It's not on the town's list as a town road, it's a parish road. Midway Road belongs to us, entirely, from state road to state road. That would be like saying Highway nineteen, we have responsibility for it from parish line to parish line. Doesn't happen that way. That's our road. East Avenue goes from East Baton Rouge Line to Highway four twelve, we own it in an entirety. So, my motion is going to be to go zip East Avenue. Put the soil cement in East Avenue, just like we all agreed to do, without a cooperative endeavor, because it is a parish road, and that is my motion.
Was waiting to elaborate on that.
There's several of them, that's, that's, there was. I will have questions on this stat, stat bill.
Well, if it's a parish road, it's a parish road, unless you have an agreement to the contrary with the town. I think the village of Norwood, you had an agreement with them, you had an incident a couple of years ago with the bridge up there. And I think that y'all agree that the town would pay half of the bridge, or something like that. I don't know if you have that type of understanding with the town's slaughter.
We do not.
But if it's a parish road, and it goes through a municipality, it's still going to be a parish road, it'll still be the, the maintaining.
That's interpretation of the thing, parish road.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's not going to stop at the, at the town limits, it's going to, it's a parish road, it's going to continue through. It's kind of like a state highway.
Wait, wait, is that a parish road? So they said something different when we had the meeting.
They were saying that it was, it belongs to the town for all good.
They said that because it was inside town, but I got a better question. Has the parish ever paved that road?
Yes.
Mr. John Arnett did it before I took office. I paved Midway twice. I know for a fact it's a parish road, it's there on our list, you're welcome, Ms. Christie, you don't have to have to fight when I'm gone. The town of Slaughter, man and mayor have discussed this a hundred times, and I have given them my word, if we were coming to fix that deck on road, and we've been talking about this for months on end.
And where are we, where, what are the, exactly?
Continue the mic, continue the mic, please, the speaker, man.
Janice Landry, I'm the mayor of Passover.
Thank you.
Um, questions, I would want to know what kind of repairs are you planning on doing to it, and how far are you going?
Four-way stop sign on four twelve to parish line.
Okay, and what are you planning on doing to it?
Zip it, soil cement in it, and then put either a limestone coverage or some gravel pipe coverage. And I'm assuming it'll stay on the overlay list.
Okay, we would like to sit down and talk to y'all, and see if we can come to an agreement to get the base like it needs to be to be overlaid. I have some money that I can put on it, but I would like it to be done correctly. We really don't want any limestone or rock put on it. We want the soil cement and a base built and a pop on it. That's for our engineers. We've had our engineers look at it, and I know exactly what they recommended that goes into that road to fix it properly. We don't want to just dump a little bit of soil cement in it, and make it hard, and then drive on it, because it's going to be the same yesterday.
That's what we just did, that's what we just did in Midway, right, Miss Quinn? We can't, we lined it up, can't just put soil cement in it. When it comes back to put, uh, limestone and everything on top of it, if you do that, they're going to do the same thing we did in Midway. You're going to go to complain about the limestone, how it's been, I mean, once you put that down, that's a good base.
That's exactly what it is, a base.
Yes.
So I don't want any rock on top of it.
How long is that for, four hundred feet?
Four hundred and sixty, four hundred and eight after that.
Four hundred and sixty feet.
But that's just for, that's just for the two blocks.
That's just the two blocks.
Yeah, that's not the parish line.
Yeah, that's not the parish line.
That's just the two, there's a spot on, there's a spot.
But it doesn't need, it doesn't need to be zipped all the way to parish line.
No, it doesn't.
So, and if we did that section, zip that, soil cement that, and then, if you're willing to help us, we may even be able to talk about doing an overlay and getting a price to see what it would cost to go from the parish line all the way to four.
I would rather do that and, and fix it correctly, rather than, you smell it, and then two, three years later, you're going to be looking at the same thing.
Ms. Janice, hang on one second. Oh, before we have one minute more discussion, I'd like to call for the vote, because we might be discussing something, and I think it's to get y'all back on.
It might be.
I'll call for the vote.
Call for the question, if you have something, please do.
Um, this is why I think maybe we do need a cooperative agreement, so that we understand between all of us what we're going to do, what your responsibility is going to be, so that there's no confusion whatsoever.
We can cross that bridge when we get there, but at this point, this is just to zip and put down the soil cement.
For the, for the, for the, for the, for the two.
For the two blocks, right? Not all the way to the block.
And then I'll sit down with Ms. Janice, and we'll work the second order this out. But let's, my motion was to zip the four fifty, soil cement in it, let's see where we go from there.
According to our engineers, there was seven hundred and twenty-five feet in that zip, in that mess up area.
We mentioned that it was four hundred and fifty.
Are the two spots?
Yeah, from the four-way stop all the way.
To Poplar.
Yes, all the way.
All the way to Poplar.
They recorded. It's four hundred and eighty feet.
Oh, yeah.
It was four hundred and sixty feet.
Not, she, she, yeah, it was like, four hundred and fifty.
No, it's four hundred foot, according to the, what I have here. East Avenue from Church to Main Street is four hundred foot long. East Avenue from Main to Poplar is three hundred and twenty-five.
Seven hundred and fifty?
Yeah, but we're not doing from east out to nineteen.
No, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about east to main, and main to Poplar.
We'll have to remeasure it.
All right, so it's a substitute motion, come back, and, uh, let them go back and get the correct figures and bring it back to the table. Because if you're not correct, you're going to keep going back and forth, because what we've got from this car is totally different than what she's saying here.
I second that. Pay, pay, we'll get more information, then we'll come back. We have that concern. Every state is a parish road. And you're what, can't want it, you're not playing, I do like it.
Has anybody checked their nineteen eighty-six master plan from, just building the road, did it identify all the parish roads?
that's identified all the parish roads? That's not a question. Has anybody checked that master plan? Can they even find that master plan?
I ain't never seen that plan.
Like, I heard it was that thick.
I ain't never seen it.
That has every parish road in it. I don't recall East Avenue.
It doesn't have everyone.
Every parish road.
It does not.
That was there in nineteen eighty-six.
My favorite one in nineteen eighty-six.
You haven't accepted any more, but except for subdivision and stuff. East is not one. The east is not new road.
So, what's gonna be done with that?
Just, I mean, answer the question though. No, I haven't seen the list. Nobody's found that book. I've never seen the list. Even when you were there, I never saw the list.
I know where the plan was seen.
I didn't say you didn't know where it was. I said, I've never seen it. Nobody shared it to me. No parish manager since I've been here has shared me that list. All I can go off of is what I'm hoping. And that road is a parish road. I'm gonna book it exactly what we're talking about. I know, I know this parish state that road.
Mr. Russo knows also.
I don't either, because that's PR, that's a corporate job. John won that baby, why ain't he PR?
Yes, sir.
So, what we think?
Thank you, thank you, lady.
Kristin Chasing, what we think be done to fix roads until y'all get this meeting set up? I mean, they have figures from the engineer that says what the, how many feet it is.
Absolutely not.
Somebody's gonna bust a tire.
I already had my daughter here, eighteen hundred and eight dollars.
So, you can't be paid, you can't?
Let me tell you, another kid get all the feelings.
You say good for her?
Let me tell you, I live right in the middle of that mess.
I know where you live.
All right.
But I would never say good for you for busting your tire.
Well, Pete, you don't live on that road and you don't see the traffic.
I drive that road every day.
And you don't see the traffic every day. I sit out there from seven o'clock in the morning to ten o'clock in the morning and I watch the traffic that comes through there and they fly through that. And they have tore up our road, they are in my yard, they have tore up y'all's ditch, they have tore everything over there, because eighteen wheelers go through there, uh, everything in the world goes through there. So, I'm telling you, I know what my pop is about. If y'all don't fix it, I have asthma. I had to have taken tailors every day because of all that crap y'all had put on that road. It is killing me. It needs to be fixed. I'm sorry, y'all, of us, her tires.
I ain't not, you said good for me and it's really hard for me not to say good for you.
Well, let me tell you.
That was out of my heart.
But at the meantime, what we think be done?
Nothing. You can't do it, but.
Even grading, that's what Slawer's been doing, grading. It can be smooth by grading in Philly.
Ms. Bart, they're not saying they're not gonna do it. They're saying they need to get together and have it written before we do it, so we have an agreement and everybody knows what's gonna happen. That's all, that's, that's all they're saying.
Well, I appreciate it.
I just wanted to pass on a little bit more information about that, about East Avenue. It runs, like y'all said, from East Avenue Parish Line, which goes all the way out to Langue Road, if you follow it. And it comes into four twelve. Through there, there are six hundred and eighteen, eighty-one cars that go on limit to four twelve daily. So, that's, when you, when you see the amount of traffic that goes through there, it doesn't qualify. It, none of the rest of our streets have that kind of traffic on there. That's the only one. And there are sixteen hundred and fifty-five cars that go from nineteen to east on four twelve. So, that corridor right there just has an enormous amount of traffic.
Mr. Corrigan, when was the last time you did some work on East Avenue? Thanks. Ms. Janice, I'll, I'll pick it up.
Please do.
Uh, we, I think, uh, people who came in a couple of weeks ago, they talked about ladder flying and we had a study done on it with engineers when I was checking and it would cost a ton to land, right at a few dollars for a million dollars to do that road. And we do not have the funding to do that. We've especially just one road and there's another problem is that there's still placement out there. Those residents out there, before you do anything to that road, are gonna have to put cars down. Uh, anything you do is not gonna do any good. So, uh, all I can tell you is no action.
It'll cost a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Seventy-six.
Just dollars.
A few dollars for a million dollars.
Causing a thing, they just cannot afford to redact their road.
And it'll cost all the residents wherever that culvert costs, it's a thousand, fifteen hundred, a hundred thousand dollars.
So, it's never gonna happen. It's very confusing to check or cope with that.
I would never say that. I think all things are possible.
Well, all things are possible, but I meant, you know.
That doesn't happen first.
So, that's part of the side of it, that's all I have on. Okay, I got the one item on here that's recommendation to begin advertisers to accept the bids for the replacement of Carruth Row Bridge. Uh, we had a public work meeting last week and we had some contractors that came in and gave us some prices, but, uh, because of the price that it's going to cost, it asks to be bid out and we need to get a motion tonight to get that started. So, we try to be just taking care of it as soon as possible. Uh, because I'd like to remind people that this has got people on a terrible strain with our dog, uh, trucks, uh, school buses. This road takes priority over a lot of things that's going on right now and we need to get this taken care of as soon as possible. But I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and open up advertisers.
I like to say. Okay. We just allocated three hundred thousand, a certain, uh, if, say, if a vehicle come in, which y'all was gonna, but if they don't, it's short. I'm, 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 I'm just, we talking about finance. We talk about, we close and then allocate your money. And so, you only do that once. It's just like what these people's talking about over here, is gonna make them, you know, gonna, gonna.
We go ahead and look for ourselves in there.
They ain't got it. We have a scope of work to go with the bid package, so they know what they're actually.
Yes, we do. Everybody has been done properly.
There gonna be bidders, we have pretty, have a type of bids right now, Mr. Russo. Thank you, sir. Yeah, what's next, sir? All right, please.
Uh-huh.
Your call was. Anything else, Mr. Corrigan?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Bill's in trouble, Mr. Russo, you know.
Uh, the only thing I have, I hope for this Harris, well, he's the power of this. We have a different building and I am sure that, uh, uh, prioritized and, and courthouse is gonna be number one and, and, and the other stuff, let's fix several things and help cost a lot of money and work off the work that is now. And then when it comes to something big, we'll raise some things.
I'm just kidding, Mr. President.
So, I have a report for Waste Pro for the month of July. Forty-four complaints were with Waste Pro and twenty-three complaints were with East Louisiana Parish. Thirty-nine of those complaints were garbage not being picked up. Five of those complaints were that only half their garbage was picked up. And of the twenty-three complaints with East Louisiana Parish, Waste Pro only had eight listed in their track easy system. And three of those residents have called three or more times. Uh, common issues that we have is trash can placement, like placing them right on the side of the road where big trucks come and they knock the cans over into the ditch or they knock into the road or other cars hit them. Um, other issues are not returning within the twenty-four to forty-eight hour time period. Um, they complain that their garbage is being skipped and when they report it to Waste Pro, they say that the route is still in progress and to call the next morning if it hasn't been picked up. And overnight, the animals get into the garbage and they're now having to re-bag the garbage or they just don't come within the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours. And the garbage bags have holes in them, so Waste Pro doesn't pick them up for that week. So, they're having to pile garbage on top of garbage. And then the next week comes and they're not picking it up, because it's too much garbage.
To elaborate on earlier, I called at five assistant places, we, uh, Wilson, uh, Root Road especially. And we wanna remind people to, if they don't pick your garbage up, I've been referring them to call Kelsey to report here. Calling the jurors or whatever is not gonna get it done. We need the complaint to come through this office, so we can law it. That's the way that I can have proof. When I call these people from like a year, couple of months ago, I had documentation to show where all those complaints and calls have been made. So, that's the limit to do that. And also, we got people that are putting garbage out and, I mean, if you put your garbage out and they don't pick it up, don't wait the three or four days to call the complainant. Call the next day. The sooner you call the dealer and you can get in contact with them, they're even sending out a smaller truck to pick up the garbage. So, I mean, I've seen this happen the last couple of weeks, this is what they've been doing. And I've been staying on top of it and staying in contact with some of the representatives from Waste Pro.
See, I have all the calls and they were picking up the garbage, they were spilling it out, dumping trash and moving it up. They were just spilling it out. So, we did this, that concern also.
I, if I could say something.
Please do.
I know when we took these people home, we had to occupy, uh, waste bins and we didn't do it. And I was kinda hard not doing that, but I see now that we probably need to revisit that and, uh, and give people bins to where, where the garbage would be picked up, just like what she said, uh, or get it destroyed. And, uh, but there, they got the contract to do it and we started off not taking calls here and told them to hand it, they couldn't hand it. And, uh, so, they just got to hand it.
I feel that they obligated to the contract to do the job and I expect them to do the job. If you have good money to pick up all the waste, you just have to do the job, they didn't pay for it. Not leave excuses for them, you don't need to leave excuses.
Oh, they just gotta do it.
They gotta do the job.
You know, I, I have, I got one person, ultimately ridiculous. Uh, I mean, I mean, it might go on three days of road, but the end result, I just gonna get one bag of garbage out of there.
I've called them in for me, to the other people, you ain't been trying, you might have got the problem.
Ms. Kelsey, do you have, do we know, do they have more problems in rural areas or in the towns or? Do you know? I'm just, I'm just curious.
So, most of them are in Slawer and Jackson. Um, most of them in Jackson are in the town of Jackson and Slawer is mainly down nineteen, um, I think it was nine fifty-five, is that any of the Slawer? No.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, it was.
Yes. So, I get most calls on nineteen, nine fifty-five. Have a couple on four twelve.
And this is only for the, for the month of July. So, maybe if, um, she can do that for about three months, you wanna, because we started to ask them, she's requested that they send their report month. So, I don't know if they know we're actually comparing, but after maybe three months, we may wanna invite them back up.
I will come in.
That's what we're trying to tell them to call us, to send it to Kelsey, we're gonna have to.
Mr. D, if I call them in, I would like to give you credit, okay?
Because I'm sure she's able to see some that she's calling in, it's not even actually on the issue.
Yeah, cameras on the truck, we should know what to do, because I don't. You're gonna head in for the pair, there's nothing behind the truck, there's times that you do it wrong. Anything else, sir?
Yes, um, so, the accident policy. Um, the couple of works, we had a visit, I believe, last week from LWCC. They met, um, they did speak with me. We went over some LWCC things, um, they went over to the yard and everything was good at the yard with LWCC. They walked around with Quinn and myself and we also spoke with, um, our CBO. The only thing that they did find, it's a recommendation on our accident policy. If you'll look in your, in your binder, it, it stated, any employee involved in an accident with a parish-owned vehicle, um, or heavy machinery, such as a road grader. We need to take that part out in just any accident, whether they, someone falls. So, that was in, we just need to remove that out, if you all would help to change that policy. I mean, the policy. And that's, um, for LWCC guidelines.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Please do.
I had, in the line of trash and whatever you were calling, I had, uh, sent them a picture of something over in my neighborhood, it's been there for two months or longer. And, uh, so, she looked at the pictures and divided it out. And I'm not disputing what she said, but it was limbs, some wood, but it's been there a long time. And I just think we gonna have to revisit how we pick stuff up, because we have monies to pick stuff up. Now, we can sit up here talking about all kinds of stuff, but that's a service that our taxpayers, you know, they may be just paying a sales tax, but we need to revisit on what and how we pick things up.
You know, waste contract.
No, no, this is not.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, I saw, I saw a picture with you, so, Mr. Corrigan, you have a document in your, it said right here, a dump, a long good, it's wood, two parts, that are right by his dumpster. Call this queen and come pick it up. We have a procedure, we go there, we have poker cards, we go there. All we have to do is call this queen before we really pick it up. Ms. Quinn.
She can elaborate what.
Everybody in this carriage knows that. Trains has to be separated. We can't pick up metal stuff and limbs at the same time. That's the problem. It's got limbs, uh, holes with concrete. We can't put that, that out, they just take the waste site. The state says, no, we have a whole sheet of stuff that we cannot pick up. And that's why we do it the way.
And please, uh, let, um, remind them that if they put out those black bags to throw on top of them, you can't pick that up either. I had to tell some people at the lecture yesterday. They got a pile of bricks, they got, uh, T-posts, all that in a pile. They got wood, everything mixed together. Old rugs, all the canned houses down. And I told them immediately, can't pick that up. You pick that up, you get the wood, you pick that up, you got those T-posts in there. If they take it to the place where it's gonna be planted, it's gonna tell the people machines are. You can't do that. And we're the ones that's gonna be responsible for that. So, it's something we might need to do, we might need to revisit that, go back and run, uh, ads in the paper again just to remind people, because I had some people out there telling me they had never heard that before. So, I mean, it won't hurt.
We can, I guess, run it different. So often, we did recently just run it and, um, posted it. Kelsey did, um, bet it out in the month of August, but we'll, we'll never go off to there to remind.
Don't pick up shine, don't pick up silver.
Don't pick up television.
Don't pick up, no, it's time, you need to know.
Microwaves.
They put them up there, but you don't, it's not, I pick them up. And like Mr. Williams said, it's gotta be separate. Anything else, Mr. Allen?
No, I guess not.
Okay, I'll go back for you.
Okay, Mr. Harris?
The accident policy.
I'd like to make that, I wish.
Thank you. Second.
So bring it on, and take it, take it out.
Yes, sir. Um, so personnel changes and recommendations, there's some inter-office personnel changes.
We got command going on.
Um.
Ah.
Continue.
The inter-office personnel changes have been made, um, that will allow operations to flow smoother. And I would like to ask the jury to approve advertisement for Parish Treasurer. We recently did the advertisement for Parish Treasurer. But if you would, um, if you would allow or approve opening up that advertising period again, I get that to you all already, to stop the advertisement for Parish Treasurer. And until you're able to, you're able to get a, um, Parish Manag-, not Parish Manager, Parish Treasurer. But Treasurer, in place of you all would appoint, um, Nikki Chee as interim Parish Manager.
There's a statement in the past.
I'm sorry, Treasurer, I'm trying to get, Treasurer.
That is in the past, we got four months left on our term. I don't think it was foul to, to point past Treasurer for three months, and the next year will come and point down the year. So if we appoint an interim Parish Manager, I mean Treasurer, which is a two-year appointment. To serve the three-month, new Treasurer, you can do jury control. So I'm looking at, of course, interim Treasurer, who worked with our, leading by, management by.
Now, uh, is, is, we, we don't, if, there's not, hadn't been any, through personnel committee or any discussion. And we don't, and I'm, and I'm sure this should, I, I have nothing bad to say about her, but is, is there anybody else in this office that would be interested in that, or could do that, or has the experience for that? And, uh, we, we just, um, uh, I, I, I will say we're stumbling, but we grasped for some air, some things.
Well, that's the whole reason, Ms., uh, Harrison sitting there, she runs the day-to-day operations, and she's working in the office, so she knows her workers. And that's why she, I guess that's what she recommends.
Well, I'm gonna take the point of what you said on that.
No, we're going to talk.
You don't have a phrase at the table, so I, I'm not gonna address really what I'm thinking. It goes along with this, I think maybe you need to, you know, I think you might need to do some fucking checking.
But any of the said, you know, the day operation, she has new comparison, was she recommended for the listed here?
I'm, I'm just gonna express my concern. Um, we think there's a problem, and I have, I'm concerned about appointing somebody who was working in that department again, because we're saying it was one person's fault, but there were two people sort of in that department. So I don't know, you know, I don't know if we ought to.
I don't think moving anyone, um, to another department has anything to do with the Parish Treasurer appointment. No one being moved to any department has ever worked together in a department before. So, I mean, the department moving is really not the, the thing, it's the.
And I don't know if that's what I'm saying, I'm saying that we've got somebody else that works side by side with the Treasurer, and we know we have a problem. So do we, do we want to kind of replace both of those people? I don't, I don't know who you, whose work side by side with the Treasurer and had an issue. Okay, well, I wasn't gonna say this, but I'm gonna say it, please, I mean, let, why, what, okay, back in the times when, when I was fine in the past due bills. Where does that go? That comes from the treasurer.
September, September, May, May, that was, that is, in open mind, the said, we're giving you the treasurer. If the father's coming, that's his concern. If the chairman's not, he's having, uh, next day, especially.
Motion.
Second.
On the table.
Ah.
And how, what you hear, I'll be with you, if the father's coming, who is treasurer, who has that his concern.
Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, yes. Region six is Monday, September eighth, I did send an email to Sunny at, um, the Police Jury Association. And Saint Tammy's President, this is a meeting date, a regular meeting date for the police jury. Um, if you would like me to, if you would like to still go, I can get you registered, but that's a police jury meeting. Day. And I asked her, she said that was the only date.
Can you change our meeting day?
Uh, September eighteenth, we have to use the advertisement. Okay. The holiday is, like, is.
Labor Day. For late change, a little seven change.
You want to change the meeting to Tuesday? What plan is on me, on that two, the demo?
A lot of people want it twenty minutes, six to five minutes. We wouldn't have, we don't make the call.
Yes. September eighteenth, the long plan is on me, on that two.
No, we don't want to say.
September.
It's a good question. Anything else to say?
Just, um, anyone who.
One of the team members.
Yeah.
Let me say a number to the brother, okay?
So if you need a motion, that's okay, to me.
Motion.
On the table, uh, your phone.
And did you all see where it is before, when you changed the date, because it's not very close. Okay?
It's embarrassing, it's, it's a couple hours ago.
It's, um.
You can do it.
Um, I have a few more things. Um, I have the burn ban, I'm sure your Home Land Security Director is going to speak about it more. I did happen to go out this weekend to one of the fires. And I received an email today that I did forward to you all from the State Fire Marshal about getting the word out about the ban on the, the burn ban. Spoke with someone from the school, Felicia and Bank, Mr. Will Andrews. If they would maybe use their signs to put out about the burn ban being in effect. If there's anyone else, you know, that has signs, a store, anything, if you all would help get the word out about the burn ban. Because it's really a lot of stress on the first responders. Um, I did know of, um, Top Twenty-three just over the weekend, but he's had a couple of them today, so. Um.
By this time, it's about four thirty, and they asked me to give you, you're gonna fix it.
There's thirteen bridges out in the parish that need to be replaced or repaired. A public hearing is getting on for Tuesday, September fifth, at five thirty on the proposed RV ordinance. The police jury office will be closed Monday, September fourth, for Labor Day. Um, there's some flyer in your, in, um, binders about a walk-in call. I spoke with a couple of the jurors, if you can see. There is, it says Walk for Life in the Felicianas, Feliciana Bank and Landmark Bank are sponsoring this event. There is a ten dollar, I would like to see the, the jurors walk with some of us in the office for. It's caused them.
Oh, there, come on.
And the ten dollar registration fee, that you be responsible for yourself, and, um, all the information's there, where you can go ahead and register, you rule it. Shirts, you'll get shirts, and you'll be responsible for the shirts yourself as well. Maybe set up a tent, Jeff and I spoke about that, a tent, and we're working on changing the date for the mammograms. We usually have the van to come in to do mammogram. Didn't miss that maybe last year, year before because of COVID, COVID. I scheduled last year, and I didn't even remember, it's the date later in October. So hopefully we can get it changed to October seventh, and do the parish white pink out on that day as well. Um, the last thing I believe I have is the annual WIC breastfeeding awareness baby shower. We had it last year, and it was a huge success. This month is breastfeeding awareness month. Um, so we, on August twenty-eighth, from eleven to one, we're gonna have the baby shower over at the Heath Health Clinic. It's for WIC mothers, mothers-to-be, um, those are the people that have signed up to be there. But we would like the jurors, if you can, to come through.
And, uh, what is that?
We're quick on this, because I'm gonna move on. So this is probably this is next week, next, next week, Home Land Security is down there.
All right, we're gonna save the fire ban till the end. We turned in, uh, DMCG grants today, it went in, so we should be able to get our revert reimbursements on it. And whenever they give their approval on it, so far, we sent temporary stuff in, and they said everything looked good so far. So we'll find out about that. Uh, some good news is, we sent the letters in for the little signet bar, getting my salary instead of paid by the police jury, and they're looking at getting it retroactive to August of last year. So we're, we're working on that, Tracy's been working with all the people around, uh, Devol, with DCFS. I mean, I made a lot of contacts right now, and they're all pushing, so we sent the letter in requesting that. And so far, the preliminary was that we're probably gonna be able to get that. So that'd give us some more funding to be able to use in the parish for other stuff. Uh, we started off this weekend by Saturday, Sunday with twenty-three structure fires, about twenty-three wild fires, even though we got a burn ban. Only one was caused by accident, it was a tree fell on a power line, and, and it fell down, caught the other woods on fire. So Gemco come in and fixed it, but we've been there a couple of times on it, because it's so dry that the forest could come in, plowed lines, and you just, it's five to six inches deep in some of those woods with all your brush and all down on it. Uh, problem we ran into, a lot of the people, their comment was, well, East Lucian Parish don't follow the burn ban rules.
We don't wish them that example, they won't follow the ban.
Well, we met with the State Fire Marshal and the Louisiana Department of Agriculture and Forestry today. We had a Zoom meeting with all sixty-four parishes and all the different, you have, has sections in the parish on it. And a lot of the rural parishes are just like us, their fire departments cannot handle all fires. And we had four fires going on at one time, they were opposite sides of the parish. And we had enough firemen with Love Creek, Clinton, Ethel, Woodland, to be able to hold four fires and keep it in check without our instructions down. We got real close to one this weekend, we got about ten foot from the house when we got the stop.
Mr. Bill, is that a safety issue, if we have to wrestle one for doing this?
Yeah.
It's two days.
Yeah. Well, we order sands, our fire department, we're buying forty sands, like the big competition sands. We got forty of them, we're gonna blanket the parish with it right now, especially on this side. And because they just, we're going daylight to dark, well, past daylight, we were five o'clock the other morning out. And we finished up about eleven-thirty that night. Then we had two story structure fire Friday night after we fought fires all day. Got back home at two-thirty in the morning, and six o'clock the next morning, we're back out fighting. So.
I want to commend you, you've done a good job. You think it should have, should have more responsibility, two days.
Yeah, well, I want to commend all the firemen, hey, for the work they put in. But we haven't spent time with our families or anybody.
And you don't get paid, you don't volunteer.
We're all volunteer, Home Land, and especially the East Lucian Rural Water and District Seven Water. They have been supplying us with water, East Luciana refigured some of their system to try and give us more water in the Love Creek area, so we can fill up, hey, on the fire trucks, and I heard you'd be able to get back to the state by. We put fifteen thousand gallons on one fire already, and it's still trying to burn on us. We had forestry, we got three of their guys that are with us, we running two dozers on every fire call we got. I gave them two, a high fire department radios, we have that and cell phones, any call goes out, they're automatically rolling on us with two dozers. So we cannot complain about the people in this parish, they what we did doing with the response to this fire. But the people have to stop.
You have to stop.
Hey, we're wild. So we had two more this evening. They only, one was called by a bear on their truck, and the other one was somebody burning limbs. That's all like that.
You have a question for Mr. Bill?
And we don't have a hurricane coming, we don't have time.
I don't know what that, Mr. Bill, Mr. Bill, I don't know why you did that, three times, you know, very, very close.
Yeah. Well, we actually went on WDRZ, they come out and interviewed us on one, talked about it, and they put another one on today, on a fire we were at. And somebody's been blanking, and it's pretty good, I won't call anybody's name up here in front of me. But she's been doing good, trying to put the word out, and everybody's hitting social media and all on that. They're calling that they ride out, there's somebody burning, and we're going out putting it out before it gets to the. So, that's, that's all like that.
Commissioning board before.
Um. General Allen, we need the police jury.
Thank you, quick.
So that goes directly to the police.
Quick. Got your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, training going, it'll be next year. Tomorrow, that's you, that's you.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, that's you, tomorrow is Tuesday.
Tuesday. We don't Tuesday.
That's you.
Yes, we're Tuesday.
But, okay, training on tomorrow.
Yes, right.
If we don't change, we're coming.
Can we go on the, um, really?
Don't, don't come back here, yeah. You want, we have.
Yeah, um, he made motion out that.
Yeah.
First of all.
Um.
But he's not here.
He's gone. Yeah. It was a good, motion, it was a good, yeah, yeah. All the fire.
Ah.
He done made a, a. If we don't change, we're coming.
Um. I mean, I have something to say.
Listen, you got, uh, I just want to acknowledge you, uh, if you want to let, keep, oh, if that's you.
All right.
Representative Redwood.
Hi, Representative Broderick, I just wanted to let you know I am running for reelection. There's a lot we need to do, our insurance is a big problem, homeowners insurance, car insurance, we have a new insurance commissioner coming in. Hopefully he can get things moving, we gave the old insurance commissioner forty-five million dollars. I hadn't seen anything from it, so I think it was flawed, it didn't help, didn't do anything. Broadband is another big thing coming into the parish, hopefully AT&amp;T will step up and get it going. They want to do Jackson and, uh, Clinton first, and, uh, Wilson Norwood would phase in. Slaughter has tox tables, so they satisfied from what I hear with tox cable in Slaughter. And, uh, I, I, and our children are my number one priority. Our children, no child should ever be left behind, so we need to do what we have to do for education, broadband, everything for our kids to get them, because they are future. Without our kids, we have no future. And I'm just thanking, I'm number fifty-three on the ballot coming up in October.
Fifty-nine. You want to talk to Tommy? Yesterday. Dick and Nancy?
Anybody that don't know me, they are. Uh, on a positive note.
I want to remind everybody, there's a pregnant woman.
Without interruption, no problem. Uh, on a positive note, the coroner's office is, we're a hundred eighty-nine cases for the year, but we've recouped almost seventeen thousand dollars back from the various jurisdictions. Fifty-one dollars short seventeen thousand. So we can never have that coming in before, but that's only since the first of the year. Uh, the other thing came up tonight about the treasurer. The one thing I'm gonna caution you, you're coming into the budget cycle. Really need a treasurer for that, not a, somebody filling in or anything else. Back in Jackie and the finance commission, need all the help they can get, it's historic information. The other thing that came up tonight was about that master plan book. That's a public record, it needs to be found. Y'all paid big money for Monroe, you can probably go back to him and he can hit print and do it again, but that binder should not be lost in this office.
Is that other, um, master plan that was done ten years ago?
No, 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 two different things, this is the master plan and the roads.
Two different.
That was, I didn't copy that.
Basically done back then, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gil. You want to talk to Tommy? I know, I can't, yesterday. Thank you, Nancy. And Jimmy Ford, uh, you know, it's on Monroe. And I just want to thank you guys for, uh, recommending the three hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, fixing the bridge. And, uh, there was a wildfire on Monroe the other day and a fire truck went this way and they did done the bridge and got it. So, uh, I thank y'all for that, I still appreciate you so much, and this is very, very convenient, it's supposed to be. Thank you. Mr. Gil, can you, 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 can you? Thank you.
I need your guidance. I need your guidance, we need.
I'm all on cruise, I'm living on cruise, can I get a timeline? When we prepare?
It'll be three weeks, but busy.
So you said you had a contract coming to give you parts.
Not, not about the road road. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, that. Not nobody can fill the tower, the tower, aside to, to repair it. We have, we take no deal.
James, did you just say a contract came in last week?
We gave us a projected price of about a week of cost.
We got the bid out. We got the bid out.
That goes to the four miles.
It's going to be a process.
How did you tell you didn't? Initially, in the first start, it was a bit like four or five, to get the bridge fixed, they gonna take that long to time.
Okay, just, just a reminder, the Comette Bridge is out for over three and a half years, believe me.
It's a long competition.
And that didn't affect me like this other, I have to drive all the way around to Clinton. And go to work and say, Crashville, I have to take, and I have to go home.
If you go to the beer process, what did you do that? This job, we're going to.
Now, for mention of old folks, I have this fire truck, spill buses, dogs, mail. My daddy had that mail through.
We try to listen to Chris, that good in France.
Was your name, he?
Marla.
Thank you, sir.
We're going to do it.
Chelsea Tech, I live on current track. My niece is directly affected by this bridge being out. School board on Sunday, I feel like y'all don't know none of the zone, the one child is affected. I'm gonna bring her all the way from my house, all the way around to drop her off at school and pick her up.
It's a process we have to go through.
Somebody needs to figure something out.
We gotta figure it out, it just takes time, it can't be done overnight.
Something needs to be done, you know?
It's gonna be good.
Okay, if the children are the future, how is she gonna get to school because what if we had no means to get her to school? Kimmy is not coming to pick her up, they want me to bring her all the way to Wilson to drop her off. I'm not driving all the way to Wilson just for my niece to catch a bus.
Work it out with the public school board, can we?
The school board has also told me I can go bring her to Clinton and she can catch a transfer bus to Jackson. And then she can go back to Clinton and get picked up there. My father has just had open heart surgery. He is in no condition to get out, he missed heat to go pick her up. He is pretty much ridden to a chase or to a death.
We try to let the guy, best weekend, I promise.
I'm, I'm gonna speak with you after me, because I'm looking at something else, I'm leaving tomorrow night, it was in the family. And I had something else that was brought on me today, I'm gonna talk to you after me.
Okay.
We try to work it out, listen, Chris, fast. You want to talk to me? I can work for you, yes.
So I'm gonna say.
On the table?